Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Candidates Forum for Teton County Board of Commissioners. My name is George Myers and I'm Vice President of Teton Valley Rotary Club. There is a Rotary Club on this side of the Tetons in addition to the Jackson ones. Our president is out of the country on vacation, so I'm filling in. Happy to do that. And yeah, happy to have you all here. Thank you for coming out tonight. We're really happy as Teton Valley Rotary to host this event. And we're very thankful for Ann Fish and Phil here at Pierre's Theater offering up the venue. They're just great, great people, and we really thank them for that. So for tonight, we're gonna start now with soon after I finish talking. I'll try to keep that short. But we'll have prepared questions that you'll hear. And we're gonna stop at seven for an intermission. So we'll get a break at seven, about 15 minutes. There's concessions in the back. And then, so up until that intermission time and into that intermission time, we are taking questions from you, the audience, that we'll then vet and review during that last part of the intermission and then ask those questions. And actually, some of our Rotary members, you'll see we're wearing these buttons. That's why we have mine. There's in the back, you'll see Suzanne. She's got this beautiful glass planter. And we have index cards back there. If you've got questions that weren't asked in the first half, please submit those and we'll be asking those in the second part. So we think that's gonna be 7:15 till about 8:15. And then we wanna do some quick closing statements after that. Try to get you out of here by 8:30. So that's the timeline for the evening. Again, Rotary, let's see, in Teton Valley here, we meet weekly. We have a lunch meeting. And that's at the Driggs Airport in the museum behind Warbirds. So please feel free to come out. It's at noon. It's a one-hour meeting. And we do things like Student of the Month. We gave over $25,000 in scholarships to Teton Valley High School students last year. There's some literacy stuff that we do. Just a great group of people. And we had a Monte Carlo night last Friday, which was a really successful fundraiser for our first time we've done that. And we're looking to do that again next year. So a lot of exciting stuff. And you look like a great group of people. I would love to have you in Rotary. So feel free to come anytime. So let's move on. I will be, so you'll see, if you need anything from any of the people in Rotary, they do have index cards back there. And so if you do have questions, feel free to go back into the lobby. That's where that container is gonna reside.
Oh, the dead guy.
And yes, I'll be sitting next to the dead guy, Scully, in the front. And there is, if you want to sit next to him, take a photo, post it on social media with the tag of Pierre's Theater with the English spelling. It's T-R-E at the end. You get a dollar off your popcorn. All right? For all of you, I can tell you're all highly fluent in social media. You can just tell, it's brimming in this group here. But I'll be next to him if I have any questions. I may know a thing or two, but not much beyond that. Okay, so thank you very much. Really appreciate you all being here. And I will get out of the way and pass the mic to my beautiful wife, Kat Myers, who's gonna be our moderator for this evening and we'll take it away. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Welcome. I have a script. Welcome to our Teton County Commissioner Candidates Forum. We are following the format outlined by the Women's League of Voters and have worked together as a club to decide how to implement this structure. Here is how tonight will go. George wrapped it up, but you're gonna hear it again. First, you will hear a short, one-minute introduction by each candidate about who they are, where they're from, and why they are running for Teton County Commissioner. Then, we will begin with some neutral questions that Rotary has provided for the first hour. Candidates will have two minutes to answer each question and will alternate who answers the question first. There will be an opportunity for a one-minute rebuttal before we go on to the next question. The microphone will fade out when the time is up. We also have a little timer up here, if you're wondering what that is. It says on my script that George will be the timekeeper here with the dead guy, Scully, but as I said, we've got it ready here. We are recording this evening's event and ask that the audience hold their applause and refrain from commenting between questions. You will have time to chat at intermission. After an hour of questions, we will take a short 15-minute intermission, around 7 o'clock, to take questions from the audience. Thank you all for being here tonight, by the way. Questions must be asked without a clear bias. We are not taking candidates' specific questions, but only questions that all four candidates may answer. We will follow a similar format and rotating order for the second hour. We will group similarly themed questions together the best we can during intermission in order to ask them from the audience. If you have a question, please write it neatly and put it in the jar at the back of the room as soon as possible. If time allows, we may have a runner who continues to bring questions up to the moderator in the second hour. Now, let's begin and get to know these candidates. The first question is actually not a question, but an introduction. They will each have one minute. We'll begin with Cindy. Please introduce yourself. Include where you grew up, what brought you to Teton Valley, and tell us why you are running for Teton County Commissioner.
Thank you so much. Thanks to Pierre's for hosting. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Cindy Regal. I am one of your county commissioners. I have served in this role for almost 10 years and have served with both Democratic and Republican county commissioners. Six different men. That's why I'm very excited about the prospect of serving with Emma Rae. I moved to the Tetons from upstate New York right after graduating from college in 1992. My three children were born and raised in Teton Valley and my mom and brother and sister-in-law both live and work here as well. My mom at Victor Outdoors Second's and my brother's a chef at King Sushi. I'm deeply invested in this community and plan to be here until I die. Much of what I have accomplished in my time as a commissioner has been guided by the county's award-winning comprehensive plan from 2012. While I have been a commissioner, Teton County and its many partners and collaborators have completed nearly all of the action steps from that plan. It is now time to set the stage for the next 20 to 30 years. That's why we need visionary leaders with experience in county government and a strong track record of getting things done on behalf of this community. That's why I'm asking for your support and your vote. Thank you.
We have an agreement.
We're good.
We're going over a little bit on this.
We're playing nice. Hi, I'm Ron James. I'm Captain Ron Smokehouse at RR Catering. I've been in the valley since 2008, or the valley area since 2008. I have five grandkids, five children and six grandkids. If you're trying to place the accent, it's from Mississippi. That's where I'm from. What I really want you to know about me is that I'm a problem solver. And the way we solve problems is we work with you, the community, to solve the problems that come up. Some of the problems we've conquered together over the past couple of years are school lunch deficits, working with the seniors, sorry, Senior Centers to Procure Food for the Lunch Program, food distribution during the pandemic. We also work with many of the wonderful nonprofits here in the valley. Again, we've accomplished this by working as a community across party lines. I look forward to continuing this relationship to get our valley back on the right track. Thank you for coming out tonight and please vote for me.
Before I get started here, I just wanna tell George, I'm having a hard time telling which one is dead already. Sorry, okay. I'm Brad Wolf and I'm running for county commissioner because I have a deep belief in the necessity of public service. During my public service time, I have become, I have recognized the many similarities between business and government. I believe that for a county to be successful, it needs to be run like a business and also including total transparency, careful oversight, and complete accountability. When I was just five years old, I began following my father around where I grew up in Northern California. He was an electrical contractor. And I continued working with him throughout my youth. And when I was just 22 years old, I took over his electrical contracting business. I soon expanded into the lighting business and opened several successful lighting stores, which now include ones in Rexburg, Idaho Falls, and Twin Falls. I believe these 50 years, I started when I was one. I believe these 50 years of business experience make me a great candidate for county commissioner. Additionally, I served on the city council for eight years where I had responsibility to work closely with the police department, planning and zoning, many other departments, but particularly making sure the budget balanced each year and spending endless hours making sure that happened. I also worked on, or served on the Chamber of Commerce for 14 years, including a term as president where I, where we helped other businesses be successful. I served on two county hospital boards and...
Thank you.
Okay. All I was gonna say is thank you.
I love it. All right, thank you so much. We're gonna move on to the questions.
I might need to do my intro.
Oh, my gosh.
You're fine. I'm the one sitting here being like, here I go, here I go. So just one minute, yeah. Okay. Thanks. Hi, everyone. I'm Emma Rae and I'm running for county commissioner because like all of you, I am very much in love with this valley and a place like this needs leaders who are going to protect it for future generations. I grew up in Massachusetts. I came out to Teton Valley due to connections through my now-husband. All of my in-laws are here now. And people love it here. People are also struggling and I understand that firsthand. I have a two-year-old daughter who I am raising in this valley because it is a wonderful place to raise a family. Families also need support. Everyone needs support. And I think our local government can take a really active role in helping people and helping the valley stay the wonderful place that it is. There are people who wanna profit off of our valley and we need to make sure that we are protecting this place for the people who live here. My main job for the past year has been being a mom, as I mentioned. She's two years old. I also serve on two boards, our local housing authority board, Teton Valley Housing, and a nonprofit called Teton Valley Community Recycling, which is about waste reduction. I've worked at the farmer's market for the past two seasons. Prior to all of that, I was a science teacher at Teton High School. I quit to focus on being a mom for the last year.
Thank you, Emma, and I am so sorry about that. Very embarrassing. Human moment. I'm very sorry. Okay. Going forward, we will ask these questions assuming you are elected as Teton County Commissioner. First question. What do you see as the two biggest issues facing Teton Valley residents and how do you plan to address them? You get to start, Emma.
Oh, I'm gonna start. We said that. Oh, sorry.
Oh, can you ask a question? We'll talk to you.
I am gonna ask it again and I am going to pass you the question so that you can look at it and pass it along. Going forward, we will get better at this. Okay. What do you see as the two biggest issues facing Teton Valley residents and how do you plan to address them? Ron.
I think the first biggest thing we need to address is the road situation. And I think we can all agree on that. We don't have the money and the budget to fix all the roads that we have that need to be repaired. I think we have, in the county, 343 miles of roads. That's improved and unimproved roads. To fix those roads properly, it costs about $800,000 to $1 million a road to get that back to where it needs to be. We have, at the end of the budget that Daryl has for the roads and bridges, when he gets through paying off his bills, he has $2 million to fix roads with. So at that rate, it'd take about 60 years to get the roads to where they need to be. So I think we need to look outside, a couple of different ways to address that, either through private industry or federal grants. There are actually federal grants out there, especially for 33, that are designed just for scenic byways. And that would take care of 33, but that's a federal issue. But we have to look at different ways that we can raise money in order to fix our roads. I think we all agree that our roads need to be repaired. They're bad. Second thing is oversight. I think, well, I know, talking to many contractors and developers, that our building department is a mess and needs to be taken care of. So we need to have oversight and go into each department and ask them, how can we help you improve this department? What are you lacking? What do you need? And another easy answer is more money and more personnel. But we have a limited amount of money in our budget. So we have to do with what we have. So I think that's the two biggest important things, in my opinion.
You may think Ron and I have talked together a little bit. That's because we have. Roads are probably one of the highest things on my list because it's what I hear the most from all of you. I don't think I've talked to anybody that has told me how nice our roads are. It is tough here, in all fairness, you know, when you have a climate like we do, with the snow and heating, the cooling, and the frost even and everything, it's tough to keep roads in good shape. It's expensive. But I do believe that there is, maybe not ample money in the first year, but there is money that can be moved, reapportioned, and saved in order to put additional funds into the roads that will help us solve that problem over a course of time. The second thing that I'm concerned about is public safety. I feel our sheriff's department is very understaffed and underpaid. Just the other day, I was washing my car down in Rexburg and a Teton County deputy pulled up and he was cleaning his car. And I said, boy, you're a little ways from home. He says, no, this is my home. I can afford to live in Teton County. And I think the amount we're paying them needs to change. And I think we need to hire more deputies because at nighttime, there's only one on duty. And if you get multiple calls, some of them have to come 45 minutes or longer or just to help make, and by the time that happens, the problem is either solved or gone. So I think those are two of my most important things. I think also our prosecuting attorney needs some help and they're under budget. I, I, huh? Okay. I think if we, I think some of them are, deputies are afraid to make arrests because they don't think there's enough time and there probably isn't to prosecute them. Anyway, those are my two.
Okay. Thanks for the question. Talk to issues. One of them for me is certainly that we are losing people. We love this community because it's tight-knit. It's a wonderful place to be. There's a sense of belonging. People who want to stay are being forced out. People who want to live here and contribute meaningfully to the community do the math and are like, I need to get out of here. Or their home is sold out from under them. Or the wages don't match up to the cost of living. Or they get sick of commuting for a very long time for a livable wage. We have lost, I have lost dear friends, like, to moving away because they, we all know people who have had to move away, who didn't wanna move away, who were contributing meaningfully to our community. This is about the fabric of the place that we live. So to address that, a lot of that comes back to affordability issues, which touches a number of issues. Housing, wages, childcare, these basic things that people need to survive and make it here. Those are huge issues for me, but to sum it up as the top issue is just the loss of this beautiful, tight-knit, fabric community that is suffering because of the influence of outside wealthy interests messing up our local lives. And then my other one would be helping people get more involved in what opportunities there are in local government. And I'm running out of time and I'm really excited to talk more about that in another question. Thanks.
All right. I am really concerned about growth management and being able to financially afford the growth that we're seeing now. So we have infrastructure needs that extend well beyond just our roads and highways and improvements for traffic safety and allowing people to get to work and to schools and to the places they need to go safely, whether they're in a car, on a bike, a four-wheeler, a snowmobile, a scooter, roller skates. We need better transportation infrastructure. And one of the issues that we've had is we've allowed growth to happen here, there, and everywhere, all over the rural parts of the county. So subdivisions have gone in under the old land development code that are so far away on old farm roads that we're never meant to see the construction traffic or residential traffic they're getting today. So we need to tighten up, concentrate that growth in and around the cities that will help us be better at improving our road system and other infrastructure. We know that the cities, the waste treatment plan in the city of Driggs is a problem. It's not in compliance. That needs to be dealt with before we allow large amounts of growth to tie into that system. So we're not paying for growth and that is a big problem that needs to be addressed. I have proposed a lodging tax for counties, which would make us $700,000 a year to help pay for that infrastructure and services because we do have tourists here and their impacts are pretty significant. And we need to start charging them to pay for the impacts they're having. A 2% tourist tax is a top priority for Idaho Association of Counties. Top priority. We will be working out of this legislative session. So that's my solution. I have other things to talk about.
I'm gonna pass this mic in a second. Thank you so much. We have time for one-minute rebuttals. Does anyone wanna do a rebuttal or should we? All right.
Check. Okay. I do wanna touch on something that Emma said, and I agree with her on this. We are living in a childcare desert in this county. For a young family to take care of a child, just childcare expense alone is right at $10,000. Is that correct? And we gotta figure out some way as a county that we can help young families be able to afford that. That is a terrible expense. And I don't know what the answer is on that, but there's a lot of smart people in this room and y'all can help me figure it out. But if we're gonna retain young families, we need to get this figured out.
Okay, my rebuttal is on this myth that the current county commissioners don't fund law enforcement or prosecution. We know there's still needs there. We continue to increase their budgets every single year. In 2015, when I first started, the prosecutor's budget was $250,000. Now it's over $1 million, based on the prosecutor's requests herself. We have added several attorneys to that office, plus contract attorneys, and they have a lot of extra help. And we use that. The county commissioners rely on that help for civil counsel. The sheriff's budget has increased from $1.2 to $2.2 million since the time I've been a county commissioner. And the lowest entry-level staff person is around $61,000 a year for a starting deputy and they go up to about $90,000. So we are increasing everybody's wages annually and we know we need to keep up with the market on that and are really committed to it.
Yeah, thanks for that. And just to add a little bit to that, I will throw out a specific idea out there for solving some childcare challenges. One beautiful way we can approach that as a local government is public-private partnerships. And we have a great example in the Gamble House that is a huge success story. That was the result of private donors, service organizations, nonprofit, and government agencies coming together and coming up with a really creative solution for, oh, well, there's a building. Oh, well, there's land. Oh, well, now this organization can help secure the provider. And it all came together. And collaboration is something that really excites me about being an elected official. I wanna be part of those projects. So that is a way that we can start to address the childcare desert that we're in. Yeah.
Since that was my original comment, I will say I commend you for raising those budgets, but I don't think it's enough. There's just crime, too much crime is coming to the county. A lot of it, many people don't even know about, but it's there. Drugs and meth and cocaine and everything is on the increase. And we need, we need a stronger and bigger showing in the sheriff's department.
All right. Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to the next question. And if you want, I can fold it over for you on that thing so you can see what it is. What do you feel are Teton Valley's core values historically, in the present decade? And what is your hope for Teton Valley's core values of the future?
I think everyone would agree that the biggest assets in our county are its beauty, the mountains, the forest, the things that bring us here and others. I think the values have been to try to maintain those values and maintain the beauty that's here. And sometimes we go a little too far in the way we do that and put too many restrictions on people, I think. I agree that we don't want rapid growth, but I believe that there's a need for some growth. When communities become stagnant, they fail. And there's lots of examples of that. What was the second question? Oh. I coached a lot of football in my life and I used to always get those kids together at the beginning of the year and tell them, you know, if each, if any one of you tries to be the star, nothing's gonna happen. But if all of you will work together, you can accomplish great things. And if you do your jobs and do them properly, you'll move the ball down the field. And I believe that's what we need to do in the future is come together. I believe that perfect community is a community that everyone works together, serving each other. And that's what I'd like to see happen.
Oh, there it goes. Okay, our core values as a valley through the past, present, and future. I had the benefit of more time to think. I think, I would say they are steadfast through time. And the three words that come to mind for me for our values are resilience, neighborliness, and collaboration. And resilience is something, just to talk a little bit about each of those things. Resilience is something that's very dear to my heart. A lot of what motivates me to be a changemaker in our community is to, and just a leader, is to really work on how we can meet our needs as locally as possible and be a resilient community. We see that in the core historical values of this area, dating back time immemorial to indigenous people, as well as others who came later, settlers, and then people like me who came here nine years ago. me who came here nine years ago, people who came yesterday. I think we all really, to get to the next one, neighborliness. We come here because this is a place where we know our neighbors. This is a place where you can, you know, knock on someone's door when you need something and I really love that about the place that we all call home. And again, I think that that's gonna stay long into the future if we take an active role to protect our community and have people who are willing to, I guess to the third one, collaboration. Working together is something that, again, will be present in our past, present, and future and is something that really excites me. I want to be someone who is going the extra mile to seek out partnerships. There are so many partnerships on the table and ideas and solutions to be had.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, the question was about historic core values. I would just note that there were native peoples using this valley long before the settlers came here and their core values were really about taking care of the earth and celebrating all that it had to offer. I believe we can still do that. I believe it's still a core value in a different way. There are amazing natural resources here. There's incredible beauty. We have, we're connected to nature. We are still connected to nature here. You do not find that in a lot of places in this country. And I think everybody who has lived here historically, who lives here now, or dreams to come here someday, is that we are people who depend on nature for our mental health, for our physical health, for our community engagement, for our families to bond. And I think that is something we absolutely have to maintain into the future. I feel very strongly about wildlife. We have a strong hunting and fishing tradition here and that also dates back to long before white people were here. We need to maintain those hunting and fishing resources so we can continue to teach our children how to hunt and fish and live sustainably off the land. Similarly, I would like to see us grow more. That is already happening, more and more and more. And I have been a part of creating that opportunity by hiring a community food systems specialist for the University of Idaho Extension Office. We have a Ton Food and Farm Coalition as well. Thank you.
All right. So, I spoke earlier about a sense of community and what we've accomplished through the community. We've raised a lot of money for different needs in the community. We've done it across party lines. The greatest thing about this community is that when there are needs arise, we answer the call, all of us. We don't ask for what's your political affiliation, what do you believe? It's like there's a need and we respond. The greatest thing about it is like, example, you need something picked up from Idaho Falls and you can't make it, just put a Facebook page, a post out there. I guarantee you within 15 minutes, you'll have three answers, somebody's gonna help. You know, it's just a great sense of community here. We're at the age where looking for retirement and we've gone to several places. We've been to Florida, been Nevada, this is years, 10 years from now, but we're looking to, you know, places. And every time we go somewhere and come back, we just say, it doesn't even compare to where we live now. This is such a special place we live in and we do need to preserve it. We do have to control growth, but it's, growth is inevitable. We cannot stop it because when people come here, they see exactly what you saw when you came here. This place is beautiful. The outdoors is just awesome. So, we need to keep that sense of community alive. At the same time, there's gonna be growth and we gotta get ahead of that growth. So, that's where I stand on that.
You got an extra 20 seconds there, too. Any rebuttals?
I don't wanna have, I don't have any rebuttal, but I do want to say one of the most impressive things I've seen since I've lived in this valley is that there don't seem to be any community lines. There's not Victor, there's not Driggs, there's not Tetonia. It's all one big community. And like everybody here has said, everybody works together. And I think we need to do whatever we need to do to make sure that doesn't change because I think that's one of our biggest assets.
I think that that, as that's intentional, you go around the state and find a lot of cities that don't get along with the counties. We have a council of governments that meets quarterly. It's the chair of the board, which I am, and the mayors of the cities, and we address big issues that we're all facing. And I believe that for that reason, we've all supported each other. We have similar comprehensive plans and we discuss problems and try to solve them together. So, it is very intentional and has not always been that way. I would also add, I would like to see us do more. I think we should combine our planning departments and we should have one comprehensive plan for the entire community. And the planners can work together to accomplish that for the whole community and not as individual siloed cities.
One thing I would like to add, my personal opinion is there should be no political parties attached to candidates running for a county office. I think if you have a good idea and it's beneficial for the county, it doesn't matter if you have an R and D in front of your name, it's a good idea and let's pursue that. Just, I just don't want political parties attached to the council, I mean, the local politics.
I'm good.
Just a reminder, we have two more questions. We will go till seven, but if you have questions you want to write down second hour, please take them to the back. Next question. What is your plan for building, strengthening, and maintaining infrastructure in the valley, including economic growth?
There you go. I'm going first, right? Okay, infrastructure and economic growth, building, strengthening, and maintaining. This is a great question. This is a really big question. So, for economic growth, our local economy has some really amazing things going for it. We are also really dependent on, heavily dependent on two areas, tourism and real estate. I think we can do more to develop other areas to, again, going back to resilience, what else can we do to meet our needs here? One beautiful thing about our local economy is that you can buy locally-made products, you can buy locally-made knives, locally-made skis and gloves. I buy my soap from my neighbor. I mean, it's really cool and we can do more to attract businesses like that to help us, again, be able to withstand some of the fluctuations that happen in the other industries that we're really dependent upon. We have a Teton Regional Economic Coalition and an economic development plan that we can keep following to attract industries that pay higher wages. And, let's see, infrastructure. I think we really need local leaders who are very vocal at the state level. It's been mentioned, we have Highway 33, that is a state road. However, we can't just let the state do things to us. We need local leaders who are really willing to be at that table, foster those relationships, and collaborate for really creative solutions for, you know, for our major artery. And then in terms of our county roads, other services, we need to make sure that development is mitigating its impacts on the services that the county is providing. This rapid growth that we're experiencing is really taxing our infrastructure.
Okay, infrastructure as it relates to economic growth or economic sustainability. I am interested in looking at our future economy in a way that can combine higher-wage jobs, better transportation options, and infrastructure. Housing, critical to the future econ, to our future economy. And to mention something that's been talked about before, sort of childcare and education. All of those things need to be planned for together. We cannot just build a bunch of, you know, affordable housing without thinking about, you know, increasing our wages and jobs so that those people in those homes can actually someday buy their own home because that's the ultimate goal. Like, nobody wants to rent a home forever. Investing in this community is important to me. It was something that I was able to do and it's getting harder and harder. Our transportation plan, which was completed in 2020, is a good plan. We need to continue to follow it. It's getting harder and harder to pay for the cost of improving infrastructure, but if all our roads were perfect, think about how many more people would move here. So, just saying. Lastly, we got a $125,000 grant from the federal government to do a Safe Streets for All, it was the name of the grant, Safe Streets and Roads for All. It's a collaborative grant that will be planning for our major highway corridor safeties. It's a safety action plan. And we're working with the cities, all three cities, the county, Teton County Fire, EMS, and ITD. So, we will all be sitting at the same table, planning for the future of our highways and the connections to our county roads and city streets and really looking forward to that.
Yeah, I think the way we improve our economic growth is we have to figure out how to capture revenue from the tourists. Tourists that come through our county put a tremendous amount of pressure on our roads, our rivers, our restaurants, hotels, and we have, Jackson does a really good job of catching revenue from these guys, from the tourists. We are really bad at allowing people to come right down 33, take their money, go over to Jackson, deposit it there, and they have really nice things over at Jackson. They have good roads, they have a bus system, they have rec centers, they have all kinds of things. We, as a county, need to figure out how we catch that revenue from the tourists. And we also need to figure out how, a way to get them, to make them stop here in our little towns and spend money with our local businesses, which will strengthen our businesses, which will allow the businesses to pay a higher tax, I mean, not tax, higher wages, and let them afford more housing. We just allow way too much money to pass through here that we need to capture. The roads, talking about 33, there's actually a $2 to $3 million grant out there that the federal government will give us if we write the, if we write the, what's the word I'm looking for here? The grants, they will give us $2 to $3 million to help us improve 33. And if you've ever tried to make a left turn on 33, you know you're taking your life in your hands, on hand sometimes. It's almost impossible to get out there. So, capturing more tax dollars from tourists, not homeowners, but tourists, will help develop our economic growth.
I think, how to improve our infrastructure, I think we are caught between, do we want to improve it or do we not want to improve it? Because you can't have both. I think it's important that we attract more business to come, to create more tax dollars, to help revitalize the infrastructure. I know a lot of businesses don't want to come because the red tape isn't worth it or they get almost shunned when they ask. I think as a county, we need to say we want you here instead of we don't want you here. And I also believe that as a county, we need to get out of their way and let them do their thing and quit putting so many restrictions on them that they can't afford to do and build what they want to do. There's just simply too many regulations on them right now and some, I'm not saying they're all not good because some of them are necessary and good, but there's, we need to look at that very carefully. I think economic growth comes as we grow. You can't have economic growth without growth. It just doesn't work. The same people that are here can't be asked to pay more taxes. There needs to be more people paying more taxes. And I'm not saying we want to have 100,000 people here either, but we can't prohibit growth.
So, yeah, we do need to capture more of the tourist revenue and that's why I've proposed a lodging tax, a 2% lodging tax throughout the county. That is a priority for Idaho Association of Counties. It has bipartisan support from 44 counties across the state and we will be lobbying our legislature, using our association to do that this year. So, we can't capture necessarily more money from just additional businesses, which for the most part are going in the city, not the county, although we do have two industrial zones where we do have quite a bit of business happening now and it's open and available. Most of the commercial is in the cities, but the county can't raise our property tax revenue more than 3% a year. So, it doesn't matter how much sales tax is coming to, into a city, we still can't raise our budget more than 3% a year. So, growth doesn't pay for itself. We have to come up with other ways, which is why I'm proposing the lodging tax for counties. Innovative ways, that's where we have to think outside the box and know how our tax structure works here.
Well, the 3% tax increase was written back in 1990. We need to, as a county, work with the state and say, at least have some, have legislation written to do away with that. We're not just a normal county in Idaho. We are an anomaly. Us in Boise, the county of Boise is in, we attract way more business, way more tourists, way more attention than the regular counties in Idaho. So, we need to work with the state and get rid of that 3% increase. We need more money than that. That was written in 1990 before we just blew up and we're just expanding like crazy. So, we need more revenue.
I'll just add another piece that has been lightly touched on before, but especially for this question. We need to protect our agricultural part of our economy. Farming and ranching is really important to this valley for a number of reasons. You know, cultural value, heritage, locally grown food, locally raised meat. We need to support that part of our economy and that means protecting working lands. Our open spaces are valuable for lots of other reasons, too. They allow animals to migrate through and so we definitely need to be including our farmers and ranchers in these conversations as well.
What is your plan for executing your vision across party lines, should you be elected?
Okay, I just want to say that I agree with Ron. I wish these weren't partisan positions, but...
but yes, we do have to work across party lines. Most of the people in this community are unaffiliated voters, they don't select Republican or Democrat. I have been working across party lines, both at the local, state, and federal level, and I will continue to do that. My vision is that we need to regroup, like our community cohesion feels like it's dissipating a little. It feels like maybe from the national political scene, we're getting like a little bit more like sort of these partisan battles that I don't really like. I definitely have felt like a little bit more attacked as a Democrat in the past few years than when I first ran, Democrats are evil, you know, the terrible comments you get. But anyway, I, my vision is to redo our comprehensive plan, which is a very community-involved process, where we come together and we look at what we wanna be in 20 or 30 years, and we divide into groups, you know, the farmers and ranchers, how can we help them stay farming and ranching? It is so important to all of us for so many reasons, including the scenic values, the food, the tradition, the heritage, the wildlife, and all of the, really now it's resiliency, the farmers are gonna help us when we, as we move forward and deal with climate change, which is another thing that we have to include in our comprehensive plan. Sustainability, resilience, planning for future climate disasters, and making sure we can come together and solve the problems of the future. And by doing an update to our comprehensive plan, it brings us together to create a common vision for the future and the action steps we need to get there. Thank you.
Well, my idea for executing a vision across the party lines is to surround myself with a lot of smart people, and in this valley, we do have a lot of smart people, and they are independents, they are Republicans, they are Democrats, they are libertarians. We have a lot of smart people here, and I plan on surrounding myself with them and getting not just the answer I want, but also answer that maybe I don't want, you know what I mean? It's like, what are the pros and cons? Give me the cons, give me the pros. We, we live in a small, we play in a small sandbox here, you know, we need to get, we need to play a little bit better, we need to get along better. And that does include crossing party lines. We've met with, I've met with Will Frelick, Frelick from the, he's the mayor of Victor, I've sat down and talked with him, I've talked to Will Stubblefield about the river, I've talked with several different Democrats as well as Republicans about the issues that we face in this county. And just because they are on a different, a different political party does not diminish their intelligence or what they're trying to accomplish in this county. They're very smart, very competent people, and they have the best interest of this valley in their heart. So if we can get together and come together as a community, we can solve a lot of problems. We don't need a D or an R in front of their name.
I forget the question. I wrote, I wrote, I wrote the answer, but I forget the question. What was it here? You expect me to read that? Okay, yeah. So I go back to my football analogy, I think working together is the way we accomplish things. I think we need to work as a county, a complete county, in a collaborative cohesive way. I think we need to have greater accountability between departments and between the commissioners and the departments. I think as we do work together, we really can solve problems, but we need to all be on the same team and running our, each of our departments smoothly and like a all 11 in the football team making the play happen. I think we need to be a county where people come to the county to solve their needs and feel good when they leave, not rejected. And as we, as I talk to people, and as Ron's talked to people, they get the feeling that the county is not there to really help them when they have a need. And that's one of the things that I wanna solve as a county commissioner, is when the citizens come with a problem, that we do all we can to solve it.
Okay, thank you for this question, it's so important, and I am really excited, I have a pretty bold and specific idea. This is why I'm excited, I'm running for a four-year term, if you don't know, they alternate between four and two years, and I know there's a steep learning curve to this job, and I don't wanna make any unrealistic, put any unrealistic ideas out there. My idea is that most people, no matter what party they're in, most people, what they need is help, there's like a fly near me, they need help understanding how government works, what it actually does. I want to make all of that boring stuff really awesome and exciting, because it is to the regular person. Regular people don't have time, most people are so busy, whatever they're doing, they're busy. It is overwhelming to figure out what government does, how it works, and what opportunities you have to actually make your voice heard, from making as simple as just a public comment on an issue, to actually getting involved on a board or a commission, we have all these openings and opportunities for community members to get really involved. And again, that is, whatever party you are, if you don't wanna be in a party, anybody, and we need all these diverse people and ideas and perspectives to come and help, but foundational to that is a really engaging program that actually teaches people how it all works in an accessible way, and cultivates leaders and just engaged people who all of a sudden, they, they actually know what they need to be informed about, they know how to get informed about it, and then they can actually form that opinion and make that opinion heard. That's a lot of steps and barriers, and I really want to work on a program that addresses that, and it will take time, so I'm glad I have the four-year term, like I said.
Okay, I just want to commend the county staff. There's about 110 staff members that work every day in service to this community for the county, whether that's on roads, at the transfer station, in the assessor's office, in the clerk's office, for probation, obviously law enforcement, emergency management, and the list goes on and on. And these people are there every day, serving our community in the best way they possibly can. It is getting busier, it is getting harder, and the public is getting more difficult to work with. We appreciate all of the time and energy they put into serving this community, and they do have accountability, and they are transparent, and there's always room for improvement, and so we do have a strategic plan for the county, and the second priority is staff sustainability, and we have a lot of implementation to do there, but we need to keep our staff happy and well-trained, and they will serve, continue to serve the community well. Thank you. All right, so at the end of the night, all candidates will have time for closing remarks, you will not wanna miss these, so please return, I heard a laugh over there, please return to your seats after intermission in about 15 minutes, maybe I'll turn the timer for the audience, and we will resume promptly in 15 minutes. First of all, can we just give them a round of applause?